Okay, we're recording. I'd like to welcome everybody to the January 22 HPB meeting in the Village of Pittsburgh. I'd like to make a motion to open this meeting.
Second motion.
And member Sarah?
Yes.
Member Torres?
Yes.
Member Dubraski?
Aye.
Chair Pollock?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have a need to recuse themselves because of the issues in front of us this evening? No?
I do not.
Okay, let the record show we're all set. Okay, very good. We have two items on the agenda tonight, and starting with the nine west Jefferson Road. You guys have a bump out, so please come forward and help us give us a little more detail on this. We have an extensive...
Hello, my wife, Mom.
Okay, good. So, tell us a little bit about the project. I do notice one thing on here that it talks about a bump out, but you're actually doing work in the rear of the house as well.
Yeah, so our main goal of the project is to create a modernized, sleek interior kitchen and to reconfigure some internal space and some minor outdoor space to have a ladder. Between those two things, we're trying to reclaim a little bit of room. The two rules that we're creating that extra room that you see is the bump out for the kitchen.
Okay.
And then on the back, we're using the existing footprint, we're just converting what is kind of a makeshift mudroom into finished space.
Yeah.
So those are probably the two exterior implications over there.
Is the construction itself on the rear of the house already there?
That's right, yeah. We're using the exact same footprint. We're changing, the changes would be we're adding a door to the back, we're sealing off the space that's kind of like a mudroom.
Right, right. But the exterior walls and roof are there already?
Correct, but we're also for a cover over that back door, which is a mudroom.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just want to be sure I understand the existing condition.
So a couple of baseline questions, just for me. I take it that the siding where appropriate will match the siding of the existing house. And then talk a little bit about our favorite subject here, windows. What, tell us, I mean, we have all these profiles in here, but are they, what's the...
Yeah, and that's where I might be able to use some of your, I don't know how best to respond to that. I'm not quite sure. Our intent is to keep the same style, or appearance of the windows. The bump out is just a different space, you know, altogether, and so we don't think there's a blend of one.
Is this the bump out?
No, so the bump out, yeah, that you see in the plans is...
Just the plan.
Indicated in... Go where these two windows are right there.
Blue ones? Oh, yes, sorry. I meant the closing the back doors.
That's right, yeah, exactly. That's kind of like, that's the makeshift little mudroom that you see right there. It'll become a full interior space.
Okay.
Okay.
I need my glasses on. The plan is to insulate that.
To burn a mud...
Thank you.
Part of the act system.
So, will you be reusing the windows from the space where in the kitchen where the bump out is, or is that all new?
I think we're planning on using those new. So going from a, there's two windows that are evenly spaced, two, the bump out will have three. They will be of that style and approximate performance. I think there is probably some marginal changes to the size of them.
Okay.
The bump out is two stories. This, I'm sorry, I'm pawing through here. Is there a second story drawing sheet? Pardon me?
It's just one story.
It's just a one story.
It's got like a shed roof to match the width of the roof.
Yeah, it's a single story bump out.
So, okay, I had a concern about an area that was a second floor space that if it was new, here you can see it's one story, that's the bump out. Right, no, no, I saw that, but I, when I looked at these drawings on my computer at home, I looked at what I thought I saw.
Maybe a different, yeah.
Maybe.
It's another issue for the...
Yeah, that's the second one.
Second one tonight.
Okay.
Yep. So are these, I'm back on the windows again, are these wood clad or what?
I can answer that, Mr. Chair. They are a fiberglass clad window. It's a Marmoet Halliday, which is a window that I used successfully in the Village of Pittsburgh. And it's detailing, fabricated, a wood window detailing, but it is not, there's not a whole wood window, so it's a cracked window. The proportion of style and reality of the existing wood windows are very close to the back.
I see that, yeah. Okay.
There are no other ganged windows on the house, is that right?
Correct.
What is the, what is the width of the mullion on this gang? Are these going to come pre-fabricated? Is it a three-piece window, or are they three windows set with a mullion, individually set with a mullion in between?
I believe they're gang, although I have to admit, I have to wait to draw these together because we've got lots of projects.
Yes. Well...
I understand your question.
Okay, well, the reason why I ask is traditionally, a group of windows like this would have a large mullion because they would not come pre-molded. They would have been separate windows that were installed one at a time with a structural mullion in between. And I would only...
Yes, I would agree with you, and they are factory-ganged at this point, but I would agree with your determination to think that they should have a piece of trim between windows. As though they were delivered individually.
Or, and, the spacing between them should be a more traditional spacing. Typically, that ends up being, I'm going to say roughly three inches, maybe four at the most, but a structural mullion, you see behind you...
I see, I see three and a half, three and a half inches.
In what era, what era house? You're missing the point.
Yeah.
Traditionally, you didn't buy three windows already molded together.
Correct.
They went in individually with a wood mullion minimally two by four, if it didn't need, if the header didn't need the additional structural support, two by four would be the least. And then there's all of the wooden parts of the window, the thickness of the jamb on either side, so...
You know, I can research that because the other thing that we have to consider is that a traditional wood window had metal, they had weights, lead weights, that actually ran between the windows.
Yes.
So that probably required a lot of storage space for those metal weights to go side by side.
Right.
Well, but they go side by side from the back, not side to side?
Yeah.
I've taken, I've taken my windows apart, I know how they go.
Yeah.
But these three stacked, it looks like there is some separation on either side of the middle window.
There is separation, but this drawing is, this is a reduced, it's one, a quarter inch equals a foot, and these are reduced to probably around, this is about half size. I didn't bring my scale with me, my architectural scale, but my opinion is the spacing between these three ganged windows. Otherwise, this is a, this is a lovely addition, I'm sure it will be very useful and functional for you, but traditionally grouped windows like that have a much wider mullion in between them. The wood you see between, if you turn around and look at the windows behind you, they had some more traditional size.
And there is room in the overall width of this bump out.
Yeah, there's room.
To accommodate a little more.
I don't disagree at all, I think you're 100% on it. And it would feel a bit, and what else, I think we should do that. If I answer, are you with that?
Well, it ends up being more expensive because it's three separate windows to install, and there's a little more wood, but it's...
Yeah, I think the other consideration is we're trying to use the space to the side of the windows, cabinet space. And so we're projecting about how far to the right or the left that the mullions go.
Yeah, I understand.
If you were to say like, hey, I'm going for the, you know, kind of the minimum, if you have any, how do I respond to that coming from you?
May I, may I ask your architect another question about the drawing itself? I'm looking at the plan view, and I'm looking at the bump out, and I see the sink, and I see the dashed lines going from the counter edge to the wall. Are those lines indicating cabinetry below or above? Because if it's above, you already have cabinets that are overlapping the window.
Those are cabinets below, actually.
I don't see any upper cabinets shown on, on your floor plan.
Good catch.
Right here.
Yeah.
See this, see this line? This dotted line here? This says, these, no, these are the upper cabinets.
The length of it, yeah, okay.
These are the upper cabinets that are over the countertop or the ranges. These dashed lines are showing the divisions of the counter, of the cabinets under the counter.
Maybe their intention is to add the cabinets later, not necessarily pay the construction bill.
Well, okay, but the, the argument against the, what I consider a more appropriate traditionally sized mullion is that they're trying to put upper cabinets there, and they're not even shown.
Yeah, but just because they don't have them in the drawing doesn't mean they don't intend to put them up.
But that doesn't change my point that I think the mullions need to be wider. Then the cabinet is, the cabinets on either side are maybe three inches less on each side than they might be otherwise. Cabinets are generally, unless they're absolutely custom, generally come in three-inch widths, 12, 15, 18, 20, 1.4, that sort of thing.
Yeah, you know, we've got, we've got ready to design the interior for, and you know, I've got as much flexibility as we can.
Yeah, you don't have a lot of storage in your kitchen.
Yeah.
I got that, I picked up on that right away.
So, is there, is there consideration to putting some additional spacing in there then? Is that what we've come out here on?
I think they indicated they would consider that.
Yeah, okay.
But we may have to ask you more directly.
Yeah. Miss S.
Yeah, we're interested in...
Well, he asked what would be the minimum that would be architecturally appropriate, and he said three inches, and she said no more, like four, is what I heard.
I said that four was not enough.
Oh, okay, more than four.
More than four.
And I suggested three and a half because it's a standard piece of trim.
Oh.
But, you know, not a standard piece from 100 years ago.
Okay.
I think, I think we figure I have to adjust it to get the three and a half inches.
Okay, you're, you're talking about six pieces of trim. That's actually only four pieces of trim, three windows, four pieces of trim. That's not a lot of trim.
Okay. All right, any other, any further questions? My question is, there's some roof lines in here. I know you, you had a balustrade that was mentioned, but is the roofing material the same as the upper part of the...
As usual, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I'm sure that's a...
Mr. and Mrs. Bates, are you, are you aware of these, they're called the blue form, blue sheets?
He says the house is like 1890.
Yes.
Yeah.
Do you know that, do you know that about the house?
Yes.
That the house was owned by Mr. Edward Horsher, I think Horsher, who was a harness maker with a home on State Street where the Prudential Building is now, the Prudential Building is gone. Mr. Horsher and his son operated a tinsmith shop in a shed.
Yeah, it's interesting, when we moved in, there were some really interesting relics from pieces of machinery that I think the prior owners had kept around and used as displays in the yard. It was super interesting. And then pieces bolted into the actual floor of that shed, so the stuff like that, I throw on it.
Yeah.
That's pretty cool.
I'll donate my blue sheet to you if you're interested in having that.
You can, you can look it up on the Village website and print one of them, very long, if you want.
Either way.
Yeah. Thank you.
Do you know what the rear structure is original?
It's not original, you're talking about the piece here.
The little shed.
Yeah.
And the, I don't know exactly what era, but the differences in that rear piece go all the way down into the basement where they've got like cinder block foundation versus the large stone foundation.
Then that's addition.
Yeah.
Because in 1890, they didn't use cinder block.
Yeah, it's very different than the rest of the country.
That's a clear sign.
Okay, any other questions on this application? What do you think? Comments?
No, you know, honestly, my question, that's them, any questions, subsequent questions that I would have had, mostly around maintaining that it's, you know, a part of the original structure versus an existing add-on that they're modifying.
Any questions here? Questions here? No?
I've already raised my...
Okay.
Thank you.
Good, all right. Okay. Would someone like to make a motion with regard to this application?
I'll make a motion to approve the application as presented with the following condition, that the mullions between the three windows over the kitchen sink area, that's the exterior wall of the two-foot bump out, have a mullion width between four and six inches. So you've got some, your architect and contractor will have some opportunity to do what they need to make it, to make it work.
And 46 inches total for both of them?
No, individually, each one, each mullion...
Eight inches to a foot or...
Between four and six inches.
So in between each individual window, there would be four inches.
Yes.
Yeah.
So here, four inches.
How large is your trim currently, you know?
I'm looking for that, sir. I found a dimension for the corner board, but that's not necessarily the case, the existing case.
Right, I don't, I'm not sure.
Well, I suspect it's going to have to be custom, and four pieces...
I think where he was going is, they should, it should just match the width of the existing trim.
Yeah, that's why I'm going there, so that it's an even...
No, I get, I get what you're saying, and at my house, 1912, the mullions are about like this, the casing on the outside is like this.
Right, I'm just trying to accommodate if they need room for cabinets, so they don't have to go too big, but at least it accommodates that mullion for the room.
Well, I'm going to say, I'm going to guess it'll add between three or, three to four inches over the width of the window, which means not a lot in cabinet space. It might be, might mean an inch and a half on one side, an inch and a half or two inches, depending on if they're custom, of the width of a cabinet.
Got it. So we've got, one variable we've got is the width of the windows themselves, we can change.
Yeah.
Well, also, you have existing mullions, there's some thickness, maybe two and a half.
It's hard to tell.
So you're saying you need to go from two and a half to four, so it's not like you're going from zero to four. You're going, you know, you're just increasing it a little bit from what's already there.
Some better, got it.
Right, I don't know what the current is.
If you have mullion in those windows naturally...
Your prefab three, three-window thing already has thickness there, yeah.
Yeah, that's a mold unit.
Yes, they're factory molt.
Okay, okay.
When they come to your house, if they're factory molt, three windows already tied together come in as a single unit, and it's put in once instead of three separate rooms.
Okay, do you have that down clearly?
Yes.
Good luck. Okay, very good, all right.
Yeah, so the proposal is a minimum of four, four to six is what you said.
Exactly, yeah.
And I don't know, depending on the windows, Marvin, you know, may be able to custom a three for with a four-inch mullion.
Right, right, right.
I don't know, but sometimes they do. I think at our house, the Anderson ones did.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
And member Sarah?
Yes.
Member Torres?
Yes.
Member Dubraski?
Aye.
Chair Pollock?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great. And I think in terms of the findings of fact on this, in our design guidelines, book on page 34 for additions, this proposal addresses a number of the things that are there with relate, with respect to relating to the rest of the structure and so forth.
So it complies with our design guidelines.
Consistent with the spirit of the architectural style, and is, does not destroy significant historical architecture, local materials, and is consistent with the styles of the district in our guidelines.
Does not represent a...
Divergence.
Negative impact on the resource.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nice job.
Thank you.
Now we have nine more questions. Thank you. Hey, please come forward, thank you.
So I'm looking to add an additional room above our pre-existing kitchen. There is a small section that we're all looking out, it's kind of like a mudroom on that side door.
Yes.
Maybe a four-foot or three-foot opening in there, and the other part of the house that we're just closed up, so that basically extend that mudroom by that distance, and upstairs that provides additional closet, which is basically space where that bump is, because it's kind of a unique, not perfect square, it's a bump out over yourself or a corner. So that's what we're looking to do.
I'm referring to this part, which is very helpful, although the type is very small, but basically, I think I get it here. These, these are really facing to the rear? These trunks? Yeah, okay, that's point number one.
They are in the back of our house.
I think I have a picture of that speed a little more way where he's expanding it. You will see that second floor up there, like where he's doing that little single doorway and expand it. You can see that.
I thought I saw more there.
I'm just trying to fill it in.
Yeah.
Basically.
It looks like it's a, good, good idea, good idea for sure. Now Ken, questions on to these, are there any new windows that are going to be installed?
The drawings do show some windows. We haven't really considered what type of windows we were planning on, just matching what we have everywhere else in the house, which are kind of more across size, so we would just continue to make sure that they all kind of look the same stylistically. Going up, there's a restriction on how many windows, I think he was placing it kind of appropriately that the architect thought would aesthetically look.
And then the clamber, any clamber addition, clavards that are added are matched the rest of the house?
Yeah.
And of course, the other question is the roof materials will be the same?
Correct.
Materials and color?
Yep, and colors will be the same color.
Yeah, oh, okay. All right, well, this is basic here.
We don't have jurisdiction of the color. Just if you're going to, if you're putting on a new roof, we want it, or you're adding roofing, you want it to be the same color. You don't want a brown roof on your desk and then a gray roof on your house.
Yeah, that's all.
I don't aesthetically want that either, so...
Your color, you're on your own.
The red here is what's being demoed?
Ah, correct.
Thank you.
Can I see that?
Yeah, I'm sure it wasn't in my packet, so I'm just kind of...
Ah, correct, so that will be demoed.
That update I lifted.
This is a digital file.
I think I saw it on my computer.
You know, I'm not, am I, are there elevation, are there elevation drawings aside from the computer drawings here?
Um, yes, there's elevation drawings all along here.
I know, but is there a larger?
Not a large.
Is something larger? I guess I could just see it better because I was looking at my computer screen.
I have it on my laptop.
No, no, it's fine. I'm seeing the area I'm looking at. I'm looking at, this is sheet two A, A2, sorry, which, no, don't listen here. The, it's drawing number four, I think, I'm sorry. I can't read the writing on this, it's too small. The rear, a right elevation proposed. Right now, it's the middle, middle row, right-hand side, this one. The second story there. I'm sorry, I'm going to have to look there again.
In the room that...
Are you, is it, pardon me? Is, is this, can you see where I'm pointing right here?
Yes.
Is this just a small addition here, or is this part that comes over to where the roof edge is here? Why don't you pull, you know, applicants should pull their chairs up to the table.
So, if you would, join us. If you can see there's a small gap here?
Yes.
And we are filling in that gap, which would go all the way up?
But... So, may I use your pen for my...
Absolutely.
This line?
Yes.
Right here. This is existing, and this is new, or is, is this the line of existing?
So...
Where does the house, where does the house exist now?
The house exists here.
Already?
Yep, so let me rephrase this, minus this small area there.
Yeah, the first, the first floor.
So we are just taking this corner and going all the way up, so it will be flush with everything that is already present.
So, what is the, what is this space, second floor space being used for?
A bedroom.
Okay. And on this side, is this closet, is that why there are no windows?
Correct.
That's what, that's what's bothering me architecturally, that there's no...
So, you see how, wait, I don't know if that's, that would be accurate.
There should be a window there.
If you see here, this is bumped out.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, right.
And, you know what, I'm wondering if this drawing is not being shown accurately. So we are matching the exact footprint. We are not, I think what's happening here is you're seeing essentially, you're not seeing that additional line here. The intention is we are not filling this gap.
Right, right.
You are going right up here, so there's technically a line here, so from here to here would be like your closet, almost.
Okay.
This is actually, this is a good angle of it, right here.
Okay.
So this little bit is a closet.
So in that case, the windows, these windows, these windows are not proportioned the same way these are.
Correct, and I can change that, that is not a...
Typically, again, traditionally, what is this house built on?
It's a later.
Well, even in 45, even in 45, the windows on the second floor would typically be all the same size, except for a bathroom window.
Okay.
First floor, the same thing, all the windows the same size, except for perhaps kitchen and bathroom.
My wife had actually asked about that, because she was like, why do they not match the other ones?
Yes.
And that architect basically said, we can, it's not anything that's set in stone.
These new windows should match these.
Okay, that's not a problem.
And I feel fairly strongly that even if it's a fake window... And I feel fairly strongly that even if it's a fake window, and even if you don't want, even if you want to hang clothes over there.
Okay, just have a window in that area.
It needs, it needs a window, yes, and it should, in my opinion, it should be centered above this door.
Right there. Okay.
Because there's a rhythm of fenestrated windows.
Okay, I think that should be fine because I'm thinking currently it's off-centered, but that's because it's not filled out, so I'd just be concerned that with the bump out, it'd be shifted.
I don't mean, I don't mean that the windows should move or the doors should move. The windows should be placed directly above.
Okay.
If it's not the same width, it should, the centers of this door and the window on this face should align.
So my guess is they won't be the same width because it would be a weird, non-standard window.
But not this small.
Yep, okay. So in regards to this.
One window of the same, same size as.
As the other ones, okay.
As these others.
Okay.
So how do you want to specify that in terms of the size of the window?
So what should match the existing?
Match the existing second story windows.
Yep. So all the windows, so you'd want a window in that closet and then you're okay with the other, so that, I think this is correct?
Well, this is proposed and this is proposed.
Yeah, I'm just trying to make sure.
And this is, I can't read.
Existing.
Existing, exist, yeah. So these, these two are the proposed. Not these, don't match these.
Okay.
Because I, I would guess that these windows.
Is it an issue having them like how they are here where they're not to match kind of the kitchen?
No, well, you're not, is this, this is a new window?
Well, yeah, because this whole, all of this is new.
Okay, then.
So that would be the other wall.
Okay, now I'm with you, three, three faces, three faces.
Three faces.
Okay. All the new second floor windows should match the existing second floor windows is shown in the left elevation proposed. So these two should be the same size as these. These two, same discussion, paired is fine.
Okay.
But you need a mullion in between.
Okay, that's fine.
And this one, your closet needs a window.
Okay.
Even if you black it out, even if you put your clothes over it.
That's fine.
You might like the light, never know.
It's a natural light.
It makes it easier to tell if you're getting the black jacket or the charcoal gray or navy blue. So you'll end up with a suit on instead, instead of blue pants and a black jacket.
You're really supposed to match?
Really? Okay. We don't worry about it.
Thought it was a new style.
Well, guys don't find it as important as the girls do, so your wife might appreciate the light.
Also, if you haven't picked your windows, vinyls are no go.
Okay.
In the Village.
Yep, that's fine.
So that's.
Yeah, we haven't picked them out yet.
When you go to select.
No wood vinyls, got it.
Well, they should be, they should be part of the window type should be part of the application.
He hasn't picked the windows.
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't picked out our windows yet.
Then we may not be able to.
You may lose the table list.
Yeah, we should probably table this.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So we'll, you need to get.
Because the material of the windows is, I'm sure, one of the things that's.
Okay.
That's on the application.
Yeah, it just needs to be.
Bringing back with, with the windows back sheet.
Okay.
It'll be real quick next time.
Yep, that's fine.
Is there any?
Is there anything else just so that I can make sure I get all the information needed?
It's really the big one.
This is very helpful, but still I think we clarified, and I think we proved this a lot for you. Yeah, so that's good.
If, you're, you're printing these?
Can we make them a little bigger?
You're printing these sheets. The only, the only thing I was going to say is, and it would be a pain for you, I'm sure, the first copy, you can rotate the PDF so that this would take up the whole sheet and we'd have a little bit better chance.
You want it legal size?
No, no.
No, no, just regular.
Just, just so.
It's just the mix of letter and landscape in the same document. In print, it either conforms to one or the other.
Yes.
Which I just realized by downloading the packet, which is why I don't have the first quadrant of that.
So the, as I said, you would have to print out the application singly.
I know how to do it.
There you go.
You said no vinyl, correct?
This is really hard to.
No vinyl.
So you're, so you're comfortable on everything we've said here?
Yeah.
Okay, got this, all right.
And then it's just, I'll have them add.
I just don't really have anything else in terms of what you're giving me, as much as you can footprint or anything, it just really the window.
Well, just.
Oh, well, and the door, yes.
A little, like that little.
Yeah, that little corner.
Yeah, that's right.
Closing it up.
And I guess the same goes for the door, you have to have a sort of an appropriate, architecturally appropriate door for that.
I don't think so. I don't think that's going to be visible in any way, shape or form.
Oh, really?
Yeah, I drove by today and I was, for some reason in my head, I thought you were putting an addition on the garage.
No.
And I was like, that's weird, but okay.
No, yeah, it's really hard to see where we are when you're driving by and walking by. I tried to take pictures.
In the summertime, it's nearly impossible and without a leaf on the tree, it's still not visible.
Yeah, it's very difficult, which we're happy about, so that no one's going to see it.
It's a nice addition though.
Yep.
So we'll see you next month.
Largely, I think this is going to be, I mean.
Same date?
Originally on.
Third Monday or, you guys do it based on the Monday, third Monday?
It would be on February 29, 26.
Okay.
Yeah.
Excellent.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
We need to authorize that, but the motion to table.
Yeah, probably.
Motion to table.
Motion to table, we have a motion to table.
What's second?
Okay.
Member Torres?
Sorry, I was trying to, am I seconded?
You did, you did. No, I took member Searle's. Okay, thank you, that was your vote then. Member Dubraski?
Yes.
Member Searle?
Yes.
Chair Pollock?
Yes.
Motion package.
Very good. And Steve, there will be no charge just to come back in again, that's for the application. Good, just wanted to clarify that. Yeah, good.
Thank you.
On other matters of business, we have the meeting notes from November 20.
Oh, this is, this is from November 20.
Yeah, I know.
How come I'm looking at?
They were in the pack. Any comments on these notes?
I don't know, is there, is there any, is there any warrant in adding additional context to one of the approvals that wasn't included in the findings of fact?
Can you repeat that, Chris?
Well, the, the window replacement for Corby Circle, I mean, the recommendation from the architect was to, to use wood windows. We did not approve wood windows. And so I just felt like there should be some kind of context added for the official record. Right, and, but like, you know, they were citing the architect's notes and the architect's notes didn't reference vinyl windows at all, they referenced wood windows.
Gotcha, gotcha.
The recommendation was to replace with wood.